Good evening and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectments Meeting for the 23rd of April 2019. As always, let us begin our evening with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, followed by a silent moment of prayer or meditation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we're going to begin, obviously, you know by now we're starting at 6:30, we are going to have an executive session, starting in a minute now, so I would like to ask the board to go into executive session.
We're going to go into executive session for discussion of possible land acquisition, which the town's position would be in jeopardy if we had public discussion.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Haja?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Not least, Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you. And I also vote yes. So we'll be going into executive session to discuss, as Mr. Plasko said, a land acquisition. And we will come out of that, hopefully, prior to our 7 o'clock meeting. Good evening and welcome back to the Board of Selectments Meeting. We have come out of executive session. I want to remind you all that this meeting is being recorded and archived by our friends at Norwood Community Media, and I thank them for that. Our first appointment tonight is with Mr. James Collins of our Norwood Light Department. And good evening, Mr. Collins.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
You'd like to take center stage and go right ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. My first item on the report refers to the 115 KV transmission line. As you know, we rebuilt that line last year. But now, EverSource is involved in the whole book to Walpole reliability project. And as part of that, because we tap off of that line, we need to make some upgrades on our relaying, relaying switches. The good thing about it is it will cost us a little bit of money, but the good thing is that all the money is reimbursed because it's a pool transmission facility. So anything we do spend on there, we get back over time. The project, there's a number of projects...
Is there still money? Is there still money? In the project to cover that, or are you going to use that out of savings?
We'll kind of use that up, though. I'll be using some depreciation money to cover it. It shouldn't be overwhelming. I think the cost, the total cost of the project for the relay panels themselves is about $180,000. And the installation cost of that will probably be another $150,000. And then, out on the transmission line itself, where we actually physically moved the tap onto the new line, in other words, we're actually going to change one of the lines that we're fed from. And to do that change, and a change about, at the Norwood-Walpole line, there's another transition that needs to take place with a couple of... You know, it's all set up for that one. We rebuilt it, we set it up for that.
And that gets reimbursed, but that's over some time, not a month.
Over time, that's right. That all will get reimbursed over time. In other words, we have a credit that we get every year on transmission. It's around $3 million, roughly $3 million a year, but it predicated on what we spend.
Okay, thank you.
The other projects, some of them that are going on, Moderna has a stored battery project on their site where they installed it, and they are operating it. We get a little bit of benefit from it on peak. If they run it on peak, there'd be savings, so we have a shared savings alignment with them. We did not put any capital cost into this at all, so for us it's a win, and for them it's a win, because they wouldn't be eligible for some of these savings if not for us. Endicott Properties, Woods there, that's wrapping up, there's a few more homes there. Randy Box project is coming along, almost finished. The MBTA solar project, I just went by, it looks like they're just about done with the construction there, so I would envision before too long that should be online. But they've done their end of the work, it's about ready to go online. Avalon Bay Apartments, they're hoping to energize that service very soon, I think within a few days, they'll be ready to turn some of the power on to some of the building, so they should be just behind that. The Boston Gate Club, there's a temporary service, and they're getting started on their project. Munis, well, both the billing and the financials, we've taken a lot of effort on our part to get that going. The conversion for the utility building is scheduled now for October. Can move back a little bit. We did apply for a grant to, was it MVP grant, in conjunction with the planning department. And one of the things we were trying to do was provide a backup supply for the senior center and the school up there at the old Judy High North, Savit School. You know, hopefully we'll be successful, that would be another way to shave our peak if we're successful in that. The economics of the project all by itself, it's about a five or six-year payback, so if we can get a grant for a million dollars or so, that will really make it worthwhile. And it will provide a good backup for the senior center in the event of emergencies. I mean, the whole reason behind the grant would be, what we'd do is isolate that area of town, so that the lines that would feed basically from the landfill down to the senior center, and those houses that are in between would be the beneficiary, because they did have power too, but it would just feed that area, and we could, you know, keep them going for a number of days with the power, you know, if we got a catastrophic hurricane or outage of some sort. Temporary generators is not on your list, but we are preparing to do that again this summer. Last year was extremely successful. We were able to avoid, the final number was about $871,000 net savings. This coming year, forecasting it to be a little bit lower because the forward capacity market numbers are down a little bit, so I think the number will be about $500,000 for this year.
And that's going to be back in Ellis Avenue?
That's going to, I'm sorry, yes, that's going to be located physically down at the Ellis Avenue currently where they store the pipes.
Does this remind people, we're going to alternate every year back and forth, the landfill?
Well, if we get this battery grant, I think, I can envision that taking the place of the generator, it will do effectively the same thing. It will allow us to shed our peak, and, you know, if we, we're also still planning on going forward with at least an RFP for the landfill for solar. And if we're able to tie the solar into it, it will be a green alternative, if you would, but we'll do the exact same thing as the generator, it will shave our peak and provide backup power.
And again, none of that causes any noise or pollution to the people who went to street as far as the neighborhoods?
No, you know, the solar is a very passive environment, it just, it sits there, and the batteries are quiet also, there's no noise, it's not like you have a generator running, it's very, very quiet.
Thank you.
136 SF Road, I attached some report from the owner's project manager. The building's going along well, there's a lot of steel reinforcement inside, the skin, the sides of it are actually physically removed now, they're getting ready to put the new sides on. The roof is almost 100% complete, we replaced the high roof, the lower roof they're going to be moving to, I think, next week. Lower roof, meaning the office part of it. And that's that. On electric vehicles, we have a new program. You know, electric vehicles, a little bit of a conundrum, if they come online at the worst time, on our peak, they will be very costly to us. However, if they're off-peak, they'd be a good revenue source, so Rain Tree in Conca and Belmont have been very successful with this off-peak program, where they convince people to, when you have an electric car, I guess you set the charging in your car itself, your program at when to charge, and if you can have it go off-peak, then it will charge you after hours, it really won't affect our peak, and we'll get the kilowatt-hours from the sales of the power. They recommended an $8 a month credit to the customers to do this, so that will be another win-win by shifting the load off the peak, and that's a program that we're offering, it's very inexpensive to run the program.
Mr. Howard?
Excuse me, Mr. Collins. What are the off-peak hours? What would they be?
Well, our peak typically runs between, I'd say, 5:00 and 7:00 PM are our major peaks. It's funny, though, the power pool has the off-peak hours, in other words, what we buy and a different charge for energy is from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, so there's not a lot there, but even to get it off our demand peak, so if we shift it off of, the theory, you know, you come home from work, you plug the car in, you want to charge it.
Are those on a separate meter?
No, no, but they actually program, the car itself has a program to when to charge, to time it. They have, I guess, a little computer built into the car.
I know, but how do you know? How do you ensure in the credit?
Well, we...
I tell you I have an electric car, you give me $8 all the time?
We can actually tell now with the AMI meter what the demand curves are at people's homes, so I would be able to know that they were doing it on peak or off-peak. And the way it's working is it's not even going to be a burden unless the company that administers this program, they charge you $5 per customer a month, but they actually monitor that, and they send the notices, and they do the, you know, the informational mailing to the people and monitor it. It's a company called Dagwell, and they're currently managing the program for Rain Tree Conca Belmont, Wellesley, I think, probably.
Maybe I'm working for trouble and being ridiculous, drawing it all too far, but what if I get an electric car, I sign up for this program, and next year decide this is ridiculous, it's not for me, and sell the car, and never tell you? Am I still going to be getting that credit?
They would still see it.
How are you going to know I got rid of the car?
Well, they can actually look at the usage, patent of the usage, and tell whether there's a car at that house, believe it or not. The other thing, I think they go to the state for registration. If you have that type of car, typically you get, there are state credits and federal credits, and the tax return. The state has a database of the people that have electric cars also. All those things, I think, I, you know, could that happen? It could, but they'd still be looking at the patent, if the patent, in other words, it's a substantial load when they come on, it's actually larger than a stove, so, I mean, it's really a, it's a...
And someone's going to be watching this?
Well, they'll be checking, they'll be checking.
All right, thank you.
Continue on.
And that's what I have for the electric portion of the report.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Anything for the board?
June, just for clarification to everybody that's watching, on your KV transmission line project, who is the environmental consultant?
Environmental consultant?
Yeah, you say, we continue environmental...
VHB is a consultant, they come in about every two weeks and just look at the regrowth, there's an area that we had to recreate, a wetland.
Okay, so BHP?
No, V is Invicta, H is El Bravo.
Thanks. And then, down below, where you indicate Station 495, again, for the record, where is Station 495?
495 is down at Dean Street, that's where all the power actually comes into this. The two stations that we have in town is 495, which is down at Dean Street location, and 469, which is down at Dallas Avenue, those are the two 115 KV stations that we have.
And on the projects that you list in item 2, all the bulleted, you went through them, which is great, any issues, though? I mean, I know you talked about them, but are there any issues we need to be concerned with?
No, everything's moving along fine, you know, the Boston Gate Club is just beginning, they just have a temporary service, and they're just starting out, but there's no issues that I'm aware of on any of them.
And when are your weekly construction meetings regarding Access Road?
Yes, they're each 10:30. Yes.
Thank you. I have a little bit, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Howard, your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, one of my nieces told me the following, so I'm trying to confirm it with you. If you have a dimmer switch, and it's an LED dimmer switch, LED lights, this young lady said to me that no matter where you set the switch, it's drawing the exact same amount of electricity on an LED lights.
I, you know, I'm not an expert, but I don't believe that's a true statement. I think when you vary, what happened to the resistor in the dimmer switch, so some power being used up in that resistor, there's no question, but I think when you turn it down, it dies lower the kilowatt-hour used, but I...
Logic would say that.
I will verify that.
You would verify?
I will.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Collins, I appreciate it.
Certainly it worked out with incandescent lights, right?
It did work that way with incandescent lights, and I believe it works the same with LEDs.
Wouldn't that be right?
I was kind of stunned when you said that, because like you were saying, if you move the switch, it's not less...
But there's no question that LEDs use a lot less power, so, I mean, it's a good transition to save your power no matter what. Thank you.
Bill?
Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm sorry I was late tonight, I was actually on the phone with one of our bigger customers, ran over here as quick as I could. So I really don't have any technical updates for you tonight, I'd like to talk, if you give me a few minutes, about our sales and marketing team.
Absolutely.
I did put some figures in the report about our business, we actually have a team of two people, Ron Ray and Steve Grossman. Ron does our residential sales and marketing, and Steve does our business sales, and it really, you know, besides the great support that our technical staff gives and our billing staff, Ron and Steve really do an incredible job when you think about us competing with the two biggest telecommunications companies in the country. Every month, we have a certain number of disconnects, people move out of town, they switch providers, some of them, and some of them just either can't afford it or are no longer interested in having these types of services. So every month, Ron and Steve have to make up for those, just to keep, you know, a level of playing, a level of growth. Besides that, they typically are trying to get, you know, one plus another, perhaps two for every customer that we lose, to, you know, make that scale go up. Now, I did bring some graphs to show how well they do, and I'm sorry I don't have anything bigger, but I'm wondering if they can pick these up on...
A little higher.
A little higher?
That's why you go.
Higher, I'm deciding. They'll get any closer, or? There we go.
They're right there.
So this is the total number of customers, as you can see, since, this goes back to 2010 until 2018, you can see that's a very steady growth, and this is our total customers over that time period. Okay, hold it there. This one is pretty interesting. This is how we do against the competition, both Fios and Comcast. You can see that the scale kind of goes up for a while, and then it's rolling off over here, and all three companies are doing the same thing, and that's what we talk about month after month, is the cord cutters. These are just video customers now. So you can see that, those numbers rolling off, not as quickly as we might like, because of the cost of those services. But you see, all three companies have the same issue, and this is the same across the country. But you can also see the blue line is us, and we're, right now, we have more video customers than both of the big behemoths that we compete against. Just, you know, kind of neck and neck with Fios, but we do have more than them, and Comcast is the one on the bottom, and we're just killing them here in town. And again, you know, a lot of credit to Ron and Steve for the efforts they make each month, getting the ads out and pulling in the customers. This is our internet growth, which, you know, as we all know, zoomed out, try this, oh, good, thanks. Internet growth is also just dynamite, we're doing a great job.
That's where the money is made.
That's where we make the most money, that and the commercial sales.
No, when people see that we're losing video, it's not a big deal.
Not a big deal.
The money is in the internet side.
Right, it's our most expensive service, and there's really not much margin anymore unless we want to keep checking with the prices like the other guys doing, we really don't like to do that.
We actually, with certain customers, if they're a cable and internet customer, and they drop the cable and just stay with us on the internet, the total revenue goes down, but profitability actually increases.
Great, thank you.
And this is the last one, this is our business, and this reflects the numbers that I put in the report. Steve Grossman's just been killing it out there on business sales, stealing them away from Comcast and Verizon, his new business is moving to town, he's right on them, and he's really been doing an outstanding job.
Are we currently negotiating with Avalon?
Yes, yeah, we have cables already going in, so.
Mr. Howard?
I said this before, I'll say it again, because it's exciting, that, I believe it's '22 that we pay off the big loan on the cable?
Yes.
That's going to be a happy day.
Something to look forward to, but I have to warn you, there'll be more investments coming, not like the initial ones.
No, but you'd have these investments anyways.
Right.
So, this is, and this is a lot of money we're paying each year, so this is a good thing.
It is, it's great, we're looking forward to it.
Me too. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bill, sit down?
I am.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just one thing, notice the financials, we can see year-to-date, February 19 over 18, both in terms of gross profit and net income, we're up, and we're up kind of substantially, so that's good. It's containing costs, and revenues are rising faster than the cost of...
The business growth on the internet side's been very good.
Yeah, so that's good. Thank you.
We expect that to continue.
Do our best. Don't rest on your laurels.
All right, thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
For giving the information.
Have a good night.
Did you see Mr. Ryan?
He's right there.
Here he goes. Mr. Ryan, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. He just paid off Mr. Haja for positive vote.
It was a...
No, I had someone earlier that wanted me to drop something off to Mr. Haja.
So you say. The floor is on your side.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board, and my boss, Tony Mazuko, I'm sorry I was late tonight, so I apologize for that. I apologize, so...
You couldn't say you were in a ditch, you know?
Yeah, I wish I could say that. So, Public Works, I mean, we're busy as usual, it's springtime, things are going crazy now, grass is growing, trying to beautify the town, get fields ready for all the sports, dealing with the rain, but just, I have my report in front of you, and I'll just go through some of the things I want to highlight, you know, obviously, the, Mr. Mazuko had a few of the sessions up at the high school for the budget, and DPW presented for the DPW budget for new town meeting members and anyone else interested, as well as the capital improvement plan. Earth Day's coming up, we've participated in a couple meetings, it's Sunday, it's quite a program, you know, I invite you to look online about that. The Common will be very busy from 11:30 to 1:30 on Sunday, the 28th, a lot of activities there, Public Works will be there, as well as a lot of other departments, so exciting time, let's keep the fingers crossed for the weather. Highway and Parks, I mean, they're just straight out, making a lot of repairs for things we beat up during the winter, so that keeps us busy, job security there. We've actually begun cutting the ball fields, which is great, and fertilizing fields, Coakley Fields in particular, our main fields up at the Coakley Middle School. We continue, you know, removing trees along Westover Parkway, we're trying to clean up that area that's been neglected for a long time, and things are progressing nicely there, probably hold off on that now that things are budding and focus on other things, but we'll return come wintertime. Water Department's always busy, we began the second phase of the Access Road water main project, replacing a water main that a couple of years ago, you know, failed multiple times, just because it's a bad environment down there for anything metallic, you know, the peat in the soil and the high groundwater, so we're doing that, as well as at the Coakley Middle School, there's a section from the Hawes Pool access road going out to the back up to the Coakley Middle, so we're very busy on that. Water Department completed a water main replacement at the airport to benefit the new Mark Welch administration building there, as well as a new hangar that we'll be opening RFPs on May 6. Sewer Department, always busy, you know, clearing pluggies around town, clog drains, sewer line cleaning and lining project is ongoing on Monroe Street, Cross Street, Plimpton Ave, Railroad Ave, some cross countries, so Lennox Street, so that's been ongoing, and maybe you've seen that, it's really kind of hidden, so you maybe not have seen it, but they're very busy there. Cemetery Department, 16 interments during the month, 70 to date, so we're right on track. The chapel is getting closed, we have one more window to replace, or up there now replacing it, but I invite you to look at the fantastic job the cemetery department has done, installing granite landing to the chapel to make it accessible, and these are granite steps that we've held on, they were large granite steps that we salvaged from the high school project, and they really fit in well with the chapel, so I invite you to head up there, and they're gung-ho up there now, they fertilize everything, they install pre-emergent, they've installed grip control, now they're going to stop mowing very soon, probably, if not tomorrow, definitely Friday, weather permitting, so we're moving along very well there. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Haja?
Yes, I'm on the Public Works section, when you say there were 12, this is, again, for public consumption, because it helps, I think, there were 12 non-compliant trash that's recycling that is milled out, are you talking about to residents?
Yes, so as waste management goes along, we, they call in to their dispatch, you know, some violations, there might be trash in the recycling, there might be, you know, overloaded trash, they report it to us, and then the next day, we send out what we call "oops" letters to people, just reminding them what happened.
Okay, thank you. And on the FEMA reimbursement that you folks have been working on since last March, again, any issues to date?
No. No, it's a long, long process, Mr. Haja, Sarah Winter was done a fabulous job, the light department's been working on this, airport as well, it's very long and tedious, and...
What's the dollar value that we're submitting, or have submitted? What's the dollar value that we have submitted or?
We haven't submitted it yet, it's about to be finalized, I don't have that dollar value in front of you, in front of me, but it's probably high $200,000, but Sarah Winter has done a great job, just finalized some things today, they needed updating on, it's not a simple process with the federal.
I do also want to compliment you on the work at the Westover Parkway, on the removal of trees. You guys have done a really, really good job. I received people that have called and said they appreciate the work that you guys have done.
It's going to be a multi-year process. It's a big area.
The Winter Street facility, on the website says from 8 to 1:30. Is that going forward now, or is that...
Yeah, so we started that in December. We decided to move to early hours. It used to be 10 to 3:30. Now we're 8 to 1:30.
Okay. Let me make sure. Then I also wanted to give a shout out to Paul Winalle. I think he is doing a very good job at the cemetery. I've been up there at the chapel meetings myself. They do a great job. I do want to talk about at some point, about the fee report, what we're charging. I mean, I know a few years ago, I believe John was working with you all, John Cowell that is, while trying to make it self-sufficient or close to it. And one year, we were like inches away, and now, the past three years, we have made some significant drops. But I think part of why the significant drop exists is because you've included capital dollars in with the cost of running that, the cemetery. And I think you can look at it that way. I think year over year, you have to look at just the operational side and separate the capital, because that's ours, going to be these one-time things. But you want to look at what the operations costing you, and then adjust your fees accordingly. But I mean, I've, you know, I've been trying to work this issue and getting information, so we're going to get there, but...
I think I wish I'd planned it, and we'd come back at a future day with fees taxes.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Just one question, Mr. Ryan. Thanks for coming up to a presentation last night to talk about capital and the capital outlay plan. You have mentioned here the upcoming water main cleaning and lining project, and we talked a little bit last night about the length of time it would take to do all of that. Could you tell us a little bit about, give us sort of the global view of the water main cleaning and lining?
Yes, so we've, I mean, Mr. Carroll started this years ago, focusing on lining our water mains, which improve water quality, aesthetics, and as far as fire flows. I mean, you're talking four to six times improvement on fire flows. So that's really the benefit of cleaning the water mains and then lining them. So last year, we did Carter Street, Maple Street, Wheelock Ave, Day Street. So we're really focusing on the older sections of town. Right now, we're, you know, we're probably 30-plus years away from cleaning all these water mains, and we finally made a decision, like, you know, we need to start trying to expedite that to improve the whole water system in Town and Norwood. So right now, we have, on the capital outlay, MWRA has a zero-interest loan for $629,600 via Town Meeting, but we also asked for additional $500,000 to keep this, you know, program going, because it just makes sense. And so we're, right now, we're in design, right now, for this coming year's project. We'll see how Town Meeting reacts, and we're ready to implement additional streets as well.
Okay, that's great. Well, you know we support you on that, at least, you know, from your side. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Mr. Plasko, sir.
I don't know. I was going to bring it up under my personal agenda, Mr. Chairman. I know we're getting close to public hearing, but I wanted to discuss with the manager, thought I'd bring it up, while Mr. Ryan was here, about the street list, repaving list. Last night, we've seen in our list of capital projects, a list of streets. We presented that list of streets ourselves a couple months ago. I know, what, six months ago or whatever longer, we talked about getting a process for how we would approve streets. Couple months ago, I asked about the condition of Railroad Ave from train tracks, Central Street basically down to Pleasant Street, which I think are pretty bad, but they're not on that list. And I think I was told at the time, this was a preliminary list, and we'll be talking about the streets later on, but we've already been out to bid, and I know that's not by street, it's by tonnage and so forth. But, you know, we're moving along towards doing that list, and yet we've yet to have the actual process being recommended, presented to us, or taken a final input on what that list of streets would be. I know I'm only one person speaking, but to me, the section of Railroad Ave that I just mentioned is in a lot worse condition than at least one other street, a couple streets probably on the existing list. And I just wonder when we're going to have any kind of discussion on that.
Mark and I spoke about getting that list to the board. We talked a few weeks ago. We'll have it ready reasonably soon. We're just sort of shoring up all the roads and rechecking the inventory, and then it'll be yours to decide if you want to edit anything on that list. But we do follow our pavement management plan in terms of grading the roads. So, you know, it may be that a road as a whole is graded higher, where certain sections of it have a lower grade. So sometimes we've got to decide, do we piecemeal a road, or do we take care of a road all at once? And those are all...
Right. I mean, I'm working out a street that I think is in worse condition than others, and it's a main street compared to a back street, and different things you might consider. I know it's a longer stretch of street that might cost more money also. So I wonder if, it's not too out of order, Mr. Chairman, if I might ask the manager and Mr. Ryan to at least look at that section of the street and get us some idea of the cost estimate, so we compare it to the others, other streets that you already have on the list. Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I agree. Mr. Plasko, Railroad Ave is in terrible shape, and that street should not be in bad shape, because it's a main drag. I drive it every day coming into work. We're presently in a sewer lining, cleaning and lining project, so the first part of it has to be clean, lined, and, you know, if there are any defects, we want to get those out of the way. And then two years, not two years, another year from now, we're going to have another cleaning and lining project for Railroad Ave continuing. So I'd like to get that out of the way, but I agree wholeheartedly, that street needs to be taken care of.
Those are details that are important, because we don't want to dig them up, which of course I didn't have, and that's a great explanation. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Howard.
Two years ago, I was told, not by yourself, by another gentleman, that the reason it was going to be left was there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and that's a great way of calming the speed on that street, because you paved that brand-new there.
Populous work.
And they're going to be flying.
Just have to pay for suspensions.
Mr. Hajar?
I think we talked about this early on during the capital outlay process when we were going over roads. I was requesting actually that we would see two years worth of road listing, so we can see what's going on. So in addition to trying to outline the process of how we grade and how we determine, I really would like to see a much longer list, and then you just say, this is where we've cut it off for this year. But like you say, you never know what you're going to get out or get in for bid, and you might be able to squeeze in another road or two. We'd like to know what that road...
We can get that to you. We keep a five-year list. It is 7:30. We do a public hearing, not to cut everyone off. We can get you the full list. Mark, if you could set it along, we can get the...
Thanks for that information.
I got you the five-year plan.
Thank you.
Absolutes.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Outback?
Atreyu.
Let's see.
Good evening. Just for the record, this is a continuation of a March 19 hearing, so we're not going to be reading any notice. At that time, we brought you on a March 19 for failing to provide the public with the services contemplated by your license, nickel license, and it was continued until this date. So who would ever like to start first?
John P. Connell for the licensee. I'd like to report to the board that I think we have this worked out. To my left is Jessica...
Doratzian.
Doratzian.
Good evening.
Who represents the buyer of the license. Jessica, yesterday, filed the license application transfer.
Correct.
So we are on our road to transferring the license and allowing the Town of Norwood to utilize it and receive meals taxes. And I think that we had to work hard, but I think we're there.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have, I really have nothing to add, other than I filed the application yesterday. The gentleman that I represent owns, currently owns three other restaurants in the Commonwealth, so I think it will be a good fit for...
Bridgewater, Ashland, and Midway.
Yes.
That's correct?
So this particular, so his goal is, he has three. It's Ashland Island House, there's also Midway Cafe, and there's Boston Tavern. And he plans on making this another Boston Tavern, but a family restaurant, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Plasko. I'm sorry. Mr. Plasko?
We continue this hearing for tonight, and they just got under the wire, but they got under the wire with an application to this office. So let's proceed accordingly. I would recommend that we continue this hearing till May 14 at 7:15 PM.
Three weeks from today.
And if you would accept it under, related to this matter, under Article 14, item 14 on our agenda, is that other application, and we set up a public hearing for that matter on May 14 at 7:05 PM.
Does that work for the two adjutants?
I believe so. I believe that we can get the notice out to the abutters, and we can schedule it for, I believe that would be the 12, or the, we could schedule it for this age.
Exactly three weeks from today.
Yep, so I think we can get that done. I think we can get notice to the abutters.
My only request would be on behalf of the client, rather than sending me back out here to essentially attend their hearing on the license transfer. If you wanted to push it out further, only because, you know, the license transfer hearing should be it.
Transfer hearing should be it.
Should be it.
That's why they're both the same night.
Well, I'll come back if that's what you want.
So, well, it's up to you whether you come back or not. Falls in order, we'll transfer the license and dismiss this matter. If all isn't in order, we won't issue the license, and as far as I'm concerned, we'll revoke your license.
Well, we, from the...
We've already extended it. You're already 15 months out from when you stopped operation. You're more than eight months out since we gave formal notice of the intent, and now we're going along with this opportunity to finish the transaction. If for some reason this falls through, I personally have no intention of going any further with you.
Just from Outback's point of view, we, now that a license transfer application has been filed, it's incumbent on the transferee to pull the laboring order going forward. We believe it's a good candidate. There's nothing within our control that we can either help or hinder. We're here to cooperate, and we would love to see the license transferred and have this matter resolved.
I don't see any, and I do not anticipate any issues with the application or getting it transferred.
As my colleague stated, this has been going on since Outback closed the doors in January of 18, so we'd really like to get this cleaned off the table.
And I would like to express on behalf of the client, our sincere appreciation for allowing us the time to be able to orderly transfer the license to another, hopefully great licensee for the town.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Also?
See no questions, I think we'll...
7:05, was it?
7:05 is their hearing, 7:15 is the continue hearing.
All right, thank you.
And hopefully, there's no need for it.
So we'll continue this hearing for three weeks from tonight, 7:15.
Thank you.
Everybody good with that?
Can you make a motion, really?
I'll take a motion to that, yes. I have a second. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have a 7:50 public hearing, and we have not quite there yet, so let's go on to new business. Number one, the assistant planner is submitting notice that the planning board has organized, reorganized. Ernie Patchakowski is the chairman, Joseph F. Sheehan is the vice chairman, and Deborah Homewood will be the clerk. Information?
Information.
A second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to sign cemetery deeds?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Number three, selectmen's summer schedule. The selectmen would like to meet on May 28, and then on June 11, and every other Tuesday thereafter. The board would resume regular meetings on September 10, 2019, with the department heads, will, does the board choose to have the department heads excused, and what is the wish of the board? Everybody in favor of that? This is the thing we do annually, by the way. This is nothing new.
Well, first of all, I make a motion that, do we accept that schedule that Chairman has?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to accept that, and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. The second question, I guess, is do we want to relieve the department heads for the summertime?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Do we have to decide that now?
No.
You don't know if you want to, but if...
No, if you'd like to think about it for a week, we'll bring it back that week.
Well, we could leave it up to the chairman, based on the amount of business we have to go over.
I think you should try to have them in, but where it's every other week, not everybody will come in, or if there's other business that comes up, but at least everyone should continue to submit the written report.
Want to make a motion to that?
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Number four, Edwin W. Mulvihill Jr., Director of Veteran Services for the Town of Norwood, submitting thanks to the board for his reappointment as Director of Veteran Services for the Town of Norwood, and submitting notice that he is in receipt of the Veterans Service Officer of the Year Award for the Disabled American Veterans Department of Massachusetts, which is a very high honor. He's been singled out as the number-one veteran service officer in the Commonwealth for this particular year.
Welcome and congratulations. Absolutely.
Second.
Job well done, that's for sure.
We'll send him a notice of congratulations. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Number five, substance abuse prevention collaboration. Number one, Sagal Reese Superintendent of the Norwood Board of Health submitting a flyer with regards to upcoming training and intervention procedures for service, which is called TIPS, that is being offered free of charge. That's people who serve alcohol. And number two, Chief William G. Brooks, Third Norwood Police Department submitting request that the board distribute a flyer that we have received to all licensees, and to strongly urge them to send employees for training. There is no cost to this training that I know of, so... Mr. Hajar?
Just a question, number one. Do we require TIPS training as part of the...
There's nothing that actually requires it, but we highly, highly recommend it.
Is there any reason why we can't require?
There is no reason that I know of that we can't require it.
Well, we started to look into it. We never actually completed it. I don't know if the chief is going to do it, I was going to do it, who was going to do it?
Sometimes do it.
Sometimes do it, but we were working into the exact mechanism. Is there a BYWR? Is it just an order of the board?
You've got formal policies to actually be able to acquire it.
Yeah. You want to look into that with the chief and come back with the policy?
The chief can make a recommendation to listen to.
We're all basically inclined to do that, but we want to make sure we do it the proper way.
I think you could do that in connection with the renewal of the licenses on the next year, you know, saying that they have to have all services.
Do we ask Mr. Hajar to look into a written policy to recommend or to require TIPS training? Move that we cooperate with the request to send out notices to all the licensees?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous? Number six, Deborah Wilkes, Executive Director, Norwood Retirement Board, request, submitting request for information with respect to the selectman's position on leasing the third-floor area or any other space that will meet the needs of the Norwood retirement system. Their current lease expires in January first, two thousand and twenty. In nineteen ninety-nine, a twenty-year lease was granted, which will be coming up for renewal in January of twenty.
Mr. Chair. I suggest we have the manager go work out a lease agreement with the, with our retirement people.
I have a motion and a second to turn that over to the manager. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous? Number seven, Catherine A. Conney, Contract Administrator submitting request for approval from the board to sell the Forbes Hill property. Mr. Plasko, would you like to take that?
I think the manager would like to start.
Well, both together.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll get us going here. As the board is aware, we did receive three bids on the Forbes Hill property. The process, just to remind everyone, we did have a task force established last year that went through a process of trying to decide what the community wanted, what the best disposition of the property would be, and then how we would go forward about actually disposing of the property. That led to us developing an RFP where we rated, or we graded the sort of development that we wanted to see on the property. That, of course, took some time. We've put it out to bid, we've received three bids. Dollar amounts of the bids, and remember, under the procurement process, we don't necessarily go with the highest dollar bid, we go with what meets our requirements and the stated requirements that we wanted. Three bids, eleven million, thirteen million, and twenty-one million. The eleven million dollar bid was just a hundred and seventy-five unit housing complex, nothing else. The thirteen million dollar bid, which we'll talk a little bit, in detail in just a moment, I believe Mr. Plasko will, was a, they're calling it a medical city, so it's sort of a medical office, uh, complex and other related uses. The twenty-one million dollar bid, I do want to just talk about from a moment, that came from a, a company out of New Jersey. On its surface, sounds great when you hear the dollar amount, the twenty-one million dollars, and certainly I've been heard to say that I'd sell just about anything if the price is right, but when you actually, we dug into the details of the bid, there were a lot of, um, challenges and concerns there. One of them is that we was asked that the town be on the hook for several million dollars worth of infrastructure work, both its construction of roads and utility infrastructure, and then the permanent maintenance thereof, um, which is not something we generally do as part of a public procurement process. There were a lot of other conditions where sort of our standard conditions that are actually standard to the procurement process in Massachusetts were scratched out, and the, the vendor said that they would not comply with this, that, and the other thing, so it was questionable whether the bid was actually even a, um, qualifying bid. It technically is, it just ranks lowly, because, uh, one of the items we did look at was the impact on municipal services. Right out the gate, we'd be on the hook for, uh, several million dollars worth of road and utility construction. Uh, it's also a three hundred unit complex, is what they proposed.
Three hundred and one.
Three hundred and one, to be, uh, particular, it's three hundred and one units, uh, which the zoning does not allow for, so, uh, nor can the ZVA grant that kind of relief. When you seek relief from the ZVA, it's not to just completely, um, go around your zoning regulations. So, we'd end up having to go out to a town meeting, you'd have to get the community to want to change the zoning to allow that number of units, which I don't think there would be a, uh, real desire to do. We would then have to re-put it out to bid anyway, there's no guarantee that that number would hold, so it's really not a, a real number, um, even though at its surface, it appears to be very good. The thirteen million dollar bid that we're awarding, uh, Dr. Roberto Feliz and his, uh, DVA Medical City, Inc., is a, uh, unique project for the town, and includes a little bit of retail, and includes a little bit of, um, either condo or, uh, housing units, apartment units, as well as some medical office and some, uh, unique medical, uh, condition, uh, facilities. He's looking to tie in with some of the high-end hospitals around the world, and some of the best doctors and facilities in the world, and creating sort of a center where you would go to Norwood that affiliates with some of the top doctors in the world. So, appears to be a really exciting process. We've gone through the exhaustive and labor-intensive process of rating all the bids, and this one, again, it's, uh, low impact to the taxpayer, it's, uh, meets our standards that we set out, it's mixed youth, so it's not just residential, requires no investment on the town, and we would get our, uh, our thirteen million dollar bid back. So, that's the recommendation I have for the board, uh, as well as the committee that we have looking at the, uh, bids after taking all things into consideration. And I'll defer to Mr. Plasko to speak in a little bit more detail about the specific project, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for the, uh, board and the public certification, a little more about the project that we are recommending the board accept and move forward with a purchase sale agreement and a development agreement to hopefully conclude this sale. And a positive note for the community, as Mr. Azuko mentioned, the principal involved here is Dr. Roberto Feliz, he's an M.D., board-certified anesthesiologist, board-certified comprehensive and interventional pain management. He's in twenty-five years' experience in development and implementing successful healthcare-related entities. His proposal is just what, uh, is described, he is described as a medical city of Norwood. It's being branded as a one-stop medical plaza or a city for any individual locally, nationally, or internationally on searching for any or all related healthcare, uh, regularly related, uh, regarding related, uh, related goods, services, equipment, or medical services. They're gonna focus on patients with complex and advanced diseases. Their goal is to develop this project in the least disruptive manner regarding the trees, hills, and natural appearance of the site, which is something we were looking to, uh, see happen as much as humanly possible while developing this property. This should be a powerful new economic hub for Norwood, providing many well-paying jobs and significant property and personal property taxes for the Town of Norwood. The project development investment is, uh, estimated at approximately two hundred and sixty million dollars. The subject to this, uh, subject to the development agreement to be negotiated and reviewed by the Planning Board Conservation Commission, possibly the zoning board, full review by all department heads, uh, before any construction or development goes on on the site. It most likely will be reused, reuse of the, most likely we'll see reuse of the mansion as the focus of the medical city and used for medical offices or conference center. It might also be used as, in connection with a planned boutique hospital, which will be approximately ninety rooms. However, the decision depends on the final design cost of what the future will be for the mansion, but it's, uh, Dr. Feliz's, uh, strong desire to make reuse of that building, so we're pretty certain that will stay. As noted, there will be a medical office building, retail space for medical-related supply, services, and equipment, boutique hotel, approximately eighty condominiums. There will likely be a restaurant or two as well to service the, uh, development. There will be a theater, an Omni Theater, with an exhibition, with exhibition space, and a parking structure will be built into the hill, the slope of the hill to reduce the visible height with that, that structure. There might also be a life science or research center. The idea around that Omni Theater is quite unique. It's, uh, meant for, have a focus on entertainment and education. It's, uh, basic concept is you will enter the theater, you'll be placed virtually inside the human body, and you'll be made to experience how the human body works and functions, the heart, the lungs, the brain, the liver, the kidneys, et cetera, both in their normal state and during disease process. I'm very excited, enthusiastic regarding the possibilities that this proposal offers the town, and a reuse of the property that offers to create a number of new jobs, opportunities for the, in the town, the large increase in our commercial tax base, and all being built by someone who is very, uh, intentioned on being careful and preserving as much of the possible, uh, uh, natural nature and beauty of the site, especially along Upland Road, and his desire to save the mansion as part of the development. So I think it's a win-win for the town. We get back our, uh, basic thirteen million dollar investment. We have a little bit of money invested in maintaining it for the last two years, but, um, I think that's money well spent to end up with, uh, a development like this that's gonna provide all those plus opportunities, and would certainly recommend that we, um, approve the issuing of a, award to, uh, Dr. Feliz, subject to a successful negotiation of a purchase and sale agreement and development agreement.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well said, Mr. Plasko. If, if people recall, when we went to town meeting, asking the town meeting to put their faith in us, their Board of Selectmen, that, that we would bring back to them a reasonable project for this land in place of two hundred and sixty apartments. We have done that, folks, we have done that. We're getting, we're getting the, the same exact, uh, price for the land as we paid for the land. Yes, we, we have some dollars that, that we had to maintain the property in this meantime, while we were beating the bushes for quality organizations, but it is coming to pass, and just like Mr. Plasko, I am very excited where we stand today on this parcel. This absolutely is gonna be a win-win situation, and I too am thrilled. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko, would you like to make a motion?
I make the motion I just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the board. Issue the award to Dr. Feliz, and direct the manager to pursue, purchase the sale agreement, development agreement, to, uh, try to make the sale positive.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to, uh, our front page again, and we have a seven fifty public hearing with EMC Restaurant, Inc. doing business, the Same Old Place Bar and Grill with Mrs. Mulverhill, read the notice, please.
Application has been made to the License Board of the Town of Norwood for common victory license and transfer of the restaurant, all alcohol beverages licensed, from Y K L U Food, Inc., D V A Olivios Grill and Pizzeria, twelve ten Boston Providence Turnpike, Kayla Marie Uriel, Manager, to EMC Restaurant, Inc., D V A Same Old Place Bar and Grill, twelve ten Boston Providence Turnpike, Eric Champa, Manager, under Section twelve, Chapter one thirty-eight and Chapter one forty of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises of twelve ten Boston Providence Turnpike, Norwood, Massachusetts. Description of the premises as follows, one-story unit containing forty-five hundred square feet, kitchen dining area, bathrooms, one entrance and exit in the front, emergency exit and loading dock in the rear. Public hearing on this application will be held Tuesday, April twenty-third, at seven fifty P. M. in the Harry H., Harry B. Butters Chambers, Room thirty-four, Norwood Town Hall. Paul A. Bishop, Chairman, William J. Plasko, Alan D. Howard, Thomas F. Maloney, David E. Hajar, Selectmen of Norwood as local licensing board.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, this hearing is now open, but I'd like to make a quick statement if I could. The original applicant, uh, was requesting a restaurant, all alcohol beverage license transfer, as well as submitting an application for a common victory license. He has withdrawn his application, and is no longer interested in doing that. Any comments from the board?
Motion to close the hearing?
Yes. I have a motion to close the hearing, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous?
Motion to take no action.
Second.
I have a, uh, request to take no action on this matter, and a second, all in favor?
Just a, just a question there, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
So when you say take no action, um, the license is gonna stay with, um, Y K L U Food?
Yes.
Yes, for the moment.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Going back to our new business again, item number eight, Niall S. Connors, Vios Franchise Service Manager for Verizon, submitting pursuant to Master, Master General Laws, Chapter one sixty-six A, Section eight, Verizon, New England, Inc., C T V Form two hundred and C T V Form four hundred, also submitting a, submitting a copy of Verizon's New England Condensed Financial Statements for two thousand and eighteen, including a statement of operation and balance sheet. Information?
Information.
I have a motion and a second to take this as information, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous? Number nine, Pastor Amanda, Amanda L. Warner of the Emmanuel Lutheran Church located at twenty-four Berwick Street, submitting request to place a banner on the rails of the D A V Park at Chapel in the Wallpole Streets, advertising the Community Service Fair from now until after the event, which will be held on May fourth. Community Service Fair event was approved by the Board of Selectmen here on February nineteenth, earlier this year. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion.
The condition that be removed may affect.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous? Number ten, Lawrence Felderman, L S P Senior Principal, G Z A Geo Environmental, Inc., submitting notification in accordance with three ten C M R forty point one four zero three of the Massachusetts contingency plan, that a release abatement measure, referred to as R A M, is being implemented by the M B T A on Central Street, located at two thirty-nine Lennox Street. Work covered under this RAM plan is anticipated to start on April fifteenth, and will continue for approximately two weeks. Mr. Managers, do we have any information on what a RAM is?
It's a remedial action measure, it's usually when a contractor's taking a small environmental remediation, remediation action, and they're just required to provide some notification.
Thank you, sir, just a clarification. All right, I have a motion to, uh.
Information.
To take it as information, and a second, all in favor? All opposed, unanimous? Number eleven, Allison Pike, Norwood Junior Women's Club submitting request to use the Town Common slash Bandstand for annual family summit concert series on the following Tuesdays, July nine, sixteen, twenty-three, thirty, and August six, from six P. M. till eight thirty P. M., with rain dates on August thirteenth, twenty of two thousand and nineteen. We've done this in the past, I believe, for the last several years.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
This is a welcome addition, uh, to, to the summer concerts down, down there at, on the Common, and they do a great job, and they're well-received by the people. So I make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this. This is basically a children's summer concert series. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have a letter from a resident of Aldair Parkway submitting correspondence with regard to some questions and concerns in relation to the upcoming operational override vote of June third, two thousand and nineteen. Any comments from the board?
Suggest we refer that to the manager for proper response.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second on the motion, Mr. Chairman. Just, uh, one of the questions that Mr. Guillot has is the, asking about the override information sessions, so just to confirm, we are planning two override information sessions for the public on Thursday, May nine, and Saturday, May eleven. Do you have the times for those, by the way, Mr.?
Seven and nine thirty, I don't have the list in front of me.
Okay. We'll double-check it.
And just to be clear, those are budget balancing sessions, the Budget Balancing Committee, which has come up with the number, the amount, will be presenting those sessions.
Okay, uh, yeah, they're at seven P. M. on, uh, Thursday, May nine, thank you, Mr. Howard, and nine thirty A. M. on Saturday, May eleven. They're in the George S. Yusovich Lecture Hall at the high school, and, um, one of the questions, um, will there be people at the sessions who give the other side of the story, or just people in favor of the override? Essentially, it's, it's, it's an informational thing. Here's, here's what the proposal is, here's why we're making it, and, uh.
Correct, and it's, it's the Budget Balancing Committee that's presenting that, they'll probably have Dr. Thompson and I present some of the information, but remember that the Budget Balancing is your elected, two members of your elected FinCom School Committee in Board of Selectmen. It's not a, not a formal debate, it'll be similar to the information session we held on November twenty-ninth, it'll just be updated with more, uh, routine numbers.
Okay.
It's not the people who are organized to be in favor, and it's not any group in Norwood that's opposed.
That's the point.
Correct.
Budget balancing, okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's a attempt to give a comprehensive look on both sides of the issue, and, uh, give the information to the people, not to take a position, but give the information to the people, and let them decide come June third.
As Joe Friday would say, just the facts.
Well, that's, uh.
The motion made, you seconded.
And we have a second on that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous? Number thirteen, Giving the Glam, presented by John and Maristella Rappo, submitting application for a special one-day malt beverage license and wine for Thursday, June twenty-fifth, from six thirty P. M. till ten thirty P. M. at eighty-three Moore Street, Unit four E, for a private fundraising event. There will be a police officer on-site on detail.
Motion approved.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous?
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Just, just the fact that this, this is for prom, prom downs for people who can't afford it, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Number fourteen, we have covered, that was Attorney Jessica Durazian, Esquire, who was just in here earlier, regards to the Outback Steakhouse, and we have continued that off until May fourteenth. On unfinished business, number one, Mary Lou Folon, Town Clerk, the following individuals have expressed an interest in being reappointed, Thomas Brady, Board of Appeals, zoning, Mary C. Anderson, Executive Member, Board of Appeals, Thomas F. O'Toole, and James E. Peppin, both for constables, and Juliette Boujeau, Board of Registries. Do we have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sir, Mr. Hajar?
First of all, I want to thank the board for allowing me time to, uh, speak to them. I was able to get in touch with all of them, except for two, and one of them, Mr. Peppin appears to have moved out of Norwood, so there was no number to reach and even talk to him about it, so I'm not sure, but just for your awareness, um, I have no other concern about any other individual being recommended.
All right, on, on two points, Mr. Peppin has moved out of town, but there's nothing anywhere that prevents us from appointing him to do business within the boundaries of Norwood. And there has been contact with Mr. Peppin, uh, and he has shown that he has an interest And there has been contact with Mr. Peppin, and he has shown that he has an interest in continuing on as well as Mr. O'Toole.
I would like a motion to appoint all these individuals.
And I seconded.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. The following submitted interest in serving on the Board of Appeals zoning, that was Scott Murphy.
Motion approved.
And we...
We'd be promoting him basically from being...
From associate.
...a full member.
Second.
Correct. Any questions on that? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Number two. Economic Development Committee for Reappointment, Stephen P. Costello and Thomas Wynn for a three-year term. Their term expires April 30, 2022.
Mr. Chairman. So on this, when we last met, we had bills on there for the exact same term. I don't know why they weren't all done at once, but again, not having the ability to obviously talk to them because it's right before the end, so I have no objection with that. I'm just hoping that we get, if we know there are three or four that have to be done at one time, that we get them just a little bit earlier so that we can make, or some of us that want to, can make contact with them to talk about their reappointment. But from what I know of Mr. Costello, especially Mr. Wynn, they're outstanding and...
And these are not new appointments. They are reappointments. They've done a fantastic job.
Just for the record, this committee is basically an arm of the side of the outstanding committee, and they've been on it for a good while now. Both of them are serving well. Mr. Costello is actually currently the chairman.
Thank you. And Mrs. Mulverhill will take note of Mr. Hajar's comments. So I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Under memoranda, number one. Building Inspector Mark Schubert submitting building report for March of 2019 for our perusal. Motion to accept?
Motion to file.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Number two. Superintendent of Recreation Department Travis Foley submitting monthly report of department activities. Motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Don't all jump up at once now. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have Selectmen's Agenda. Mr. Sir?
Want to call Mr. Mizuko first?
I talked to Mr. Mizuko. Did you want to go first or second?
You should. Historically, the managers' update goes before the Selectmen's Agenda. It's your call, Mr. Chairman.
No, go right ahead.
Just one item. I am requesting that the Board accept a donation in the amount of $4,068 in total, which was actually a series of donations, the amount of funds we raised from our Bring Home the Bacon for Civics event held last Monday at the OCC. So this is sort of a first-of-its-kind civics boosters event. We had about 80 people attended. We sold about 100 tickets. Particular thanks to everyone that attended, that helped market the event and get it out there. We also, Steve Costello in the Bank of Canton donated some Red Sox tickets that we were able to raffle off and made a substantial amount of money of. And most importantly, Paul Angelo and his team at the OCC for donating all of the food, the overhead cost. That was a substantial donation that allowed the event to be positive. And the generosity of the community continues to, I think, impress and inspire everyone, and Norwood should be proud that this was sort of a first-of-its-kind event that we held here. And I've heard quite a bit from colleagues across the Commonwealth and even across the country about the event and how unique it was and how happy they were here about it. And ICMA, which is the International City Managers Association, did contact me this week, and they want to feature a story in their monthly magazine on Norwood's civics efforts.
Very good. And again, I cannot say enough about Mr. Angelo. He donated every bit of that food, and he supplied all the manpower at its own cost. So the Board is very thankful for that. Thank you, sir.
Well, we accept the donations in total and authorize, direct the manager to expend the funds for the purpose they were intended for.
Would you like to quote the chapter and section?
Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Thank you. I have a second on that also. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. That brings us now to Selectmen's Agenda, if nobody else has any issues with that. Mr. Maloney, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, I want to thank all those who have shown up to the budget information sessions that Mr. Mizuko has hosted over the last couple of weeks, especially last night's Capital Improvement Plan informational session. We had several members of the Capital Outlay Committee there, including my colleague, Mr. Hajar. I want to thank all of them for attending. The presentation this year is very thorough, well thought out, well done, and we look forward to discussing it on the floor of town meeting next month. Let's see. Secondly, we had to get to the public hearing, but I did just briefly want to add my approval of the decision, of the recommendation to move forward with Dr. Felice and the purchase of the property at Forbes Hill. Dr. Felice, one thing I like, we met him back in November. He's definitely a determined man. He has a vision for what he wants to do with that property. He has local connections. He lives locally, works locally, so we know where to find him. And he is involved in a pretty, I think, impressive area of medicine, which could probably be described as some high-end end-of-life care. That's sort of one aspect of what he does. So by concluding this deal, assuming that we do, and I think we will, we will put Norwood on the map with an additional facility in the life sciences, medical, and biotech areas. I think this is a very good decision. I hope it culminates in sale and development as planned. And Mr. Plasko, if you need any help or anybody needs any help in putting together a development agreement on that property and on the conveyance, please let me know. Otherwise, excellent work done by that committee on the Forbes Hill situation. I'm confident that it will come to a happy pass in the next 90 days and looking forward to the groundbreaking. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. And thank you for your proposal to invest your time and effort. There's nobody on this Board who's more qualified than you are. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just start interrupt. You may want to just mention, you did have an 8:05 appointment in your interview, my understanding, on your agenda. My understanding is that individual has declined to appear for the interview or is no longer interested, but you may want to just mention it because it was on the agenda.
Correct. That was Mr. Ryan Gorman, who's going to be here tonight to be interviewed for a possible associate position on the Board of Appeals. He decided not to accept that, and he has stepped down with the time. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Sorry for interrupting.
That's quite all right. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on that item, so we still need an applicant then, would seem?
We have a couple vacancies as associate members of people...
We have to review everything again. A few vacancies on there.
Two items tonight, Mr. Chair. The first, everybody's been waiting for this for a year. The culmination of our Recreation Department and the South Norwood folks, especially my cousin Mike Sad and his crew, running the South Norwood Fishing Derby and the Rubber Ducky Race. That will be this Saturday at the Hawes Pool Complex from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. The fee is $3, and that includes a hot dog and a soda for all the people that register. The ages is 15 years old and under. Registration starts at 2:00 p.m. So, and the rubber duckies are $5, and you have a potential of one of the, I believe, $25 prizes, which they have several. So 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, that's there. And yours truly, with his friends from the Norwood Sportsmans, will be cooking the hot dogs as usual there. And enjoying himself. The second item I have is, a couple meetings back, I asked our police and firefighter chiefs about, we haven't had a CPR course given by them in a while. Well, a short time after they were at the meeting, they talked it over with their people, and there will be two police officers and two firefighters will be running a CPR free course on Saturday, May 18, at 9:00 a.m. for a few hours. I suggest that you avail yourself. You never know in life nowadays when you would need your CPR to help someone. It's a very important thing, and even if you've had it several years ago, we all forget. You can register for it by calling the police or the fire business phone numbers, not their emergency numbers. And their business phone numbers are 781-440, 5100 for the police, and 5200 for the fire. Please do not call their emergency numbers. Call the business numbers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I brought up the issue of the roads earlier while Mr. Ryan was here, but I also like to take the opportunity, talking, going back to the Forbes Hill, as I mentioned earlier, very excited. Think this is going to be a great opportunity for the town, and hopefully get this all finished and you see it to its fruition. But I want to take a step back and thank the Task Force Committee we appointed. We asked them to take the hard look at the property, what we might be able to use it for, possibly town uses and cost and everything considered. Subject to that not being, appearing feasible, how else we might use the property. They looked at the rezoning, came up with a rezoning for us, and the general guidelines of what we would be looking for in developing that property down the road. They spent a lot of time, attended a lot of meetings, and I thank them for their commitment to that process. I also like to thank Mr. Helke Otis, who wasn't technically a member of the committee, but certainly supplied a lot of backup support for us. And once we decided to go forward in putting together the rezoning, that was successful at town meeting. Also, thanks to town meeting members for their support in going forward with this process. And again, Mr. Helke Otis for helping with Kathy Carney and Mr. Mizuko and others to formalize the RFP process, make some extra effort in advertising. We didn't just, didn't do the minimum. We really reached out and tried to get responses. We were able to get the interest of, I think it was 27 parties. We actually got four to submit proposals, and I think we got a good one. So I thank everyone for the process. Thank you.
Mr. Hajar, sir.
Yes, a few things, Mr. Chairman. Since we did not have a meeting last week, we weren't able to have the opportunity to say a Happy Easter or pass over to members of our community, so I'd like to do so now. I hope they all had a wonderful time with their friends and family. And I would also like to wish a Happy Easter to my Orthodox brothers and sisters, who will be celebrating Easter this coming Sunday. I also want to publicly thank Christina and Aifa for all their assistance. It's been a whirlwind over the past few weeks, and they have been great in getting a lot of information. And every time I think I'm bothering Christina, she said, "Don't worry about it, even on the weekends." So I publicly thank the both of you for making this an easy transition. I would like to show this. This is a coffee cup holder that's being used in one of the downtown businesses, sponsored by Weed Map, the same company that had the billboard ad on Washington Street as you were coming out of South Norwood above the train tracks. This, of course, was says "Fuel by Flowers," in its reference of what's in their website. It's a potent hybrid flower plant, quote, "leaving you feeling glued to the couch," unquote. So I spoke to the owner because I was, you know, being part of Impact Norwood, quite upset that a lot of young people were going in and out of there, and this is what they're getting, for their hot cup of coffee to put on. And while I am certainly cognizant of, you know, free speech, this is not the type of advertisement that I would suggest we sort of embrace in our town. This town strongly rejected recreational marijuana. So I did offer to have Impact Norwood provide coffee cup holders for him in place of these, and he has said yes, so that's great. So again, it wasn't intended to cause a problem, it's just trying to point out things in the community that are going on that sometimes others don't pay attention to. And he was very willing to sit down and talk to me about it, so I wanted to let folks know.
The more sustainable option would be to bring a reusable Impact Norwood mug to a local coffee shop instead of regaining additional paper, but we're just trying to be sustainable.
One step at a time. I too also want to, just a brief comment on Forbes Hill. A lot of people take credit, and they should, because it was a lot of hard work by all of the members of the Task Force. We took a lot of time and effort to try to find the right proposal that could be put out to bid that would meet the needs of our community. And I remember standing at town meeting urging the purchase of this property, and people were really, really upset that we were going to spend $13 million when we have so many other issues in town. And I'm so glad we did, and I think what we're seeing is the result of that hard effort, and we got what we needed, and people won't be disappointed. It's going to be a great proposal. If it goes through, it would be awesome. And the biggest gain that we're going to get is it's not going to increase town services, but it will provide a lot of business taxes, which is what we need. And as Mr. Plasko said, it's the jobs, it's what's going on up there, bringing people in, and others that will expand to downtown. This is great. So one of the last large pieces of property in town, and I was personally glad to see us take control in our own way and do something positive. So I commend the entire committee for doing what they did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And I guess that leaves it up to me. Quickly, I just want to mention, there were two proposals that we talked about, were actually three, but the two major ones were the $13 million proposal and the $21 million proposal. Do not be fooled by that $21 million number, because there's a lot of caveats that go with that. Road infrastructure, like my colleague said, utilities, and so on and so on. The best deal out of the three for this town, in my opinion, is the medical facility for $13 million. So with that said, I want to remind everybody that this coming Thursday is the beginning of our town meeting at 7:30 at the high school, the special town meeting. So that begins, and God knows how long that'll go on for, but that's another story.
One night.
Hopefully, one night.
Yeah, right.
We've made it as simple as we possibly can, so maybe we can cut it down under two weeks. Number three, I want to wish everybody in the Orthodox Christian community a very happy upcoming Easter this Sunday, including my two colleagues on the Board. And...
Three.
Three.